From 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., another fantastic example of something that we'd like to give some airtime to. Paxton Days is our annual town event. We encourage people to attend, and we recently altered our liquor laws in town so that we can allow people to consume during our Paxton Day festivities, and I hope that everybody will attend. Number five is to award an IT archival contract to King Information Systems for FY25. This is procurement FY2514, and this is a project that we currently have underway to help digitize our physical records. So with number one being taken out, are there any objections to any of the consent items?
None.
Hearing none, I declare that they are approved. Under new business, we now have a discussion of the FY26 budget. We have a review of the override election results and a discussion about next steps. So Heather, would you give us the overview of the results, please?
Yes. So according to the town clerk's records, we had 656 ballots that were cast out of a total of 3,714 registered voters, representing 17.7%. For those interested, the breakdown was 59 or 9% of those were early vote, 6 or 1% were absentee vote in person, and vote in person on Election Day was 591 or 90% of those. The item on this that's for today's discussion is question one override. There were 10 blanks, and the rest of the breakdown was as follows. Yeses were 267, representing 41%, and noes were 379, representing 58%. So the difference was approximately 112 votes to the negative.
Thank you. By any chance, and I apologize for putting you on the spot because I didn't ask you to assemble this in advance, but do you by any chance have a comparison to last year? Just wondering where we're at.
I can if I have about four minutes while you're discussing.
We can start the discussion.
I'd like to know the turnout, too, how I compare.
So obviously, the override did not pass. The override amount was $1,130,000. So now we're in a position where we're looking to balance the budget to the tune of $1,130,000. Couple of notes. First, I attended the department head meeting today. As we go forward, I think it's super important that we recognize how much of an effect this has on our employees. Our employees are our most important asset in this town, in my opinion, and making sure that they feel heard through this process is so important to me. So I attended the department head meeting, and we had some discussion preliminarily around what they'd like to see happen with this. And what I heard in the room was that, for the most part, they just wanted to be told what the number would be that they'd have to cut from their budget. And from that perspective, they would work within that to provide the best service that they can to the town. The other thing that I heard was that the larger departments supported preserving the hours and salary for the single-person departments. So for instance, the treasurer-collector, the town accountant, understanding that those positions fuel the business of the town. We offered the opportunity to participate in the process to the extent that they're comfortable in the event that they want to try to hash it out themselves and see what they come up with. That was not an option that they really wanted to pursue, understandably so, because that really does put them in a position of, you know, having to, I don't want to say fight with each other to work it out, but, you know, it could become tenuous, and I think it's understandable that they wouldn't want to necessarily participate in that. There was, of course, a lot of disappointment in the room, but they understand that moving forward, what we're looking at now is a need to restructure. We need to find a way for our departments to be solvent for the foreseeable future because it is clear, I think, at this point, that the town is not willing to pass an override. So with that, I think that what we need to do is have departments, because right now, the way we're sitting, our expenses are outpacing our revenues. And so I think we need to put these departments in a position now where that's no longer going to be the case based on what we expect for growth. So the other aspect of this is if we're just looking at the $1.13 million, and if we were to just cut that amount from the budget right now, we are still living paycheck to paycheck. We are still on the razor's edge. What we need to work toward doing going forward is creating space in our levy limit. How we do that is a great question. We had a plan in place to wean ourselves off of free cash. That really is the first step, I think, of creating the space that we need to create so that we can start being able to fund things a little bit more easily. We have situations right now where, you know, we're struggling to fund even the smallest project. I took some time recently to compare our warrant and our budget to the warrants and budgets of other towns in our school district. And what I saw overwhelmingly was their ability to be fluid where we don't have it. We just do not have that ability to be fluid here because we do not have the finances to do it. So in my opinion, our priority needs to not only be balancing this year's budget, but working toward creating space in the levy so that we can get to that place eventually. So that is my take on this. So what I heard from the departments today, how they'd like to at least start the process, is to look first at the items that were placed on the out-of-guidance forms, taking out anything that touches a contract, so anything that's contractual. Our conservative estimate, and I don't know, Heather, did you get a real number around this?
Yeah, so it's not as high as we had hoped. Because we were just over $700,000 for out-of-guidance, you got to take the 411 off the table from the school.
Yep.
So then that leaves 300 and some change. So by the time you take out the contractual pieces and some of the wage-related, you're down closer to about 200, 219.
Okay. So of the 700 on the out-of-guidance, how much of that was the contractual employment-related stuff?
The difference of the 700 minus the 411 minus the 219.
Okay.
So let's say about 100,000, give or take.
Okay, so that's about where we were.
So it wasn't hugely substantial from, and again, that was first glance of like 20 minutes. I didn't spend a long time on it. But unfortunately, there's not a lot that we could potentially just take off the top.
So the thought process earlier today was that, from the departments, was to first look at the out-of-guidance, but not touch the things that are contractual, right? And remove that first from the budget. We were hoping that that would be a number approximately 600,000 that you'd be able to take off and move that first. Then they wanted to look at preserving the single department, the single-person departments.
Yeah.
And once you take those two items, then you can sort of tally what's left and figure out what that amount is. Do we have that?
I don't have any further calculations. When we had originally, if we were going to originally do reductions across the board on things we could cut, so, you know, not employee benefits, not debt, not retirement, not schools, and you were going to reduce about just around $1 million, so if you got everything up, so it's revenues are a little bit higher, take off a couple of things on health insurance, get down to $1 million, it's approximately a 20% cut for each of the departments if you did it across the board. If you preserve the smaller departments, then that number changes.
And I think when they were talking about preserving smaller departments, I think the inkling that I got in the room anyways was we were talking about that person, that one person's hours and salary.
Yeah.
So that would be, you know, like I said, the treasurer-collector, town clerk, town accountant, and COA director.
Assessor.
And the assessor, thank you.
And the permitting coordinator.
Permitting, the permitting coordinator is a single person, yes. Yep. So that was, that was what I heard in the room today. What happens after that is what's still kind of up in the air, once we have that remaining figure. You know, keep in mind as well that of that $1.13, as Heather mentioned, 411,000 of that is school district. I believe Princeton is meeting tonight. Rutland and Sterling already met and approved the budget. So my expectation, Princeton ended up not going for an override, Holden ended up not going for an override, my expectation is that this school budget is going to pass. And with the school budget passing in four towns, we're assessed, we don't really have an option at that point. And so that 411 number needs to, as Heather mentioned, needs to be taken out of our town side as well. Okay? So we should have some more calculations from Heather soon in terms of what that remaining number is after the out-of-guidance figure is pulled off, and then we can start having a discussion at that point. I know finance is meeting tomorrow. We'll have a discussion around, you know, where we're going to go from here. What I would like to talk about tonight is what the priorities of the board are in terms of departments and levels of service, because that, I think, is a driving factor. My thought process, obviously, this is going to hurt no matter which way we go, right? It's going to hurt, it's going to hurt a lot, it's going to touch all of the departments in some way, shape, or form, and it is going to result in loss of service to the town at We want it to be equitable, I want it to be equitable to the extent that it can be equitable, but I also want to make sure that we preserve the basic units of service that these departments provide to the town. So when it comes to the DPW, I want to make sure we can maintain our roads. When it comes to the police, I want to make sure that we have 24-hour police coverage. When it comes to the ambulance, the same thing, you know, I want to make sure that we have 24-hour coverage. So those are some of the thoughts that I have, but I want to hear from you what your priorities are. I think as a board, we need to kind of, from a policymaking perspective, set some expectations around where we'd like to see things land.
I don't think anybody wants to see any cuts, but with this amount that we're going to have to find, it's inevitable that we're going to. And I would not like to see as low as any more employees than we have done.
Julie, can I interrupt? Well, we're having difficulty airing, well, we're fighting with the AC.
The AC? Let's see if we can.
Sorry.
Closer, sorry. Didn't mean defeated you. There you go.
So I was saying, I mean, nobody wants to see cuts, but with the amount we've got to find, we're going to after-cut, and I don't want to see any of our employees jump ship because we started last year, before we'd even had everything settled, we lost good, valuable employees. So I want to maintain what we can for employees in it. I applaud the department heads saying today that they want to keep the single departments in all because there's a wealth of experience in those departments and the one-man department. And if we lose those valuable employees, it'll be very difficult to replace. Not to say that it's going to be difficult to replace anybody, it's just that we've just, we've had to rebuild a little bit over the years, and I just wouldn't like to see any of those department heads go. So I'm going to have to take a look, I was hoping that after this, but I'm going to have to take a look and see what I think, now that I know that the result is what it is.
Peter?
Chris?
I don't want to skip pressure.
Yeah, no, I'm thinking. No, obviously, a 20% cut across the board is a massive amount, and definitely listening to the employees is definitely something that we all should take into account, because I'm sure they're worried, just like, you know, across all departments. Getting to your question in regards to, you know, what would be important, I think, you know, our safety, our concerns, our residents, like, that definitely comes into play, but not knowing the full number, I think, once we have that number through the whole out-of-guidance and whatnot, I think we'll have a better idea of how to go with that approach. But like you said, there's going to be, there's going to be a reduction, and it's going to hurt. So just getting a better figure, a better figure to work with, and then going with some type of strategy, I think we can all can do it.
Peter?
I think we're elected, and the finance committee is appointed to do a job, and the job is to put this together, and to put it on our employees is asking a lot. I think that clearly the priorities need to come from us. And in my opinion, and I've expressed this before in special town meeting, we need to start with public safety, because that's the one thing that our residents cannot do on their own. If, God forbid, something happens during the night, you need an ambulance. You can't transport somebody and provide medical care on your own. Something happens, and we need a police officer. That's, again, something that we can't do on our own. Now, we may be able to protect our own home, thanks to the Second Amendment. However, as I've stated before, it's a police officer that stops or slows somebody down coming up Pleasant Street before they hit somebody at the Lilly Field crossing the street. That's things that residents cannot do on their own. Those are things that they absolutely rely on us to do. So those are the things that we need to start at. Obviously, DPW. You can't go out and shovel your own street. And then, you know, the fire department. So those are the basics that we need to keep as whole as possible. I don't expect that we're going to keep anything whole, but those are the things that we have to do as a town, we have to provide to our citizens. That's something that people can't do on their own. Beyond that, it's, it should be, should be, I hate to say fair game, but you understand what I'm saying. Those are where we have to start making our cuts. The things that, the things that residents could do on their own is something that is a luxury to have in town, but I don't know that it's the necessity of police, EMS, fire, and DPW. And I continue to lump the senior center in there as well, because I've seen a senior center in action, and there are people who rely on Meals on Wheels on that, that it's going to be much more challenging to provide those services without it. So those are the five pillars that I would start with, trying to fund as whole as possible, and take funds from everywhere else we possibly can to start there. The single service, the single-person departments, I agree. I mean, they provide services that need to be provided as well. So anyways, those are my thoughts on that.
Yep. Kirk?
I kind of agree with everyone. I'd really like to know exactly what this is going to look like. I do think it's important that we do have services, police, fire, EMS, during the overnight. I think to not have that is just an invitation for a much bigger problem that we wouldn't have the funds to deal with. And we've been here before, and we use reserve funds, and we're back here again. So, you know, until we can help the greater community understand their ramifications of the situation we're in, we've got a tough job to do.
Thanks, Kirk. So given that the select board is the policymaking board in the town, I'd entertain any motions that anybody might want to have about prioritization of our budget. Tough nut to crack.
I think we've said what we want to prioritize. I think we still want to know exactly what numbers we're working with, and we haven't got those tonight, I don't think.
Well, in speaking to Mark's and Peter's comment, we've shared with the finance committee members that are in the audience what we would like to accomplish. I'm thinking it might be a good idea for them to go back and sit down and work through what their thoughts are, and then see what the department heads come back with, and see what those two pictures look like, so that, you know, the best decisions can be made. I'm a firm believer in more minds are better than small minds, so I think we just need to get as many big minds in this as possible.
Ask a question. We had the override vote yesterday, and after last year, I think many of us felt as though it may not pass. Why did we have the override vote on Monday, a board or a select board meeting on Tuesday, and a finance committee meeting on Wednesday? Why is the select board and the finance committee not meeting together? I would assume that's what the people would expect.
Right. So we did take steps to invite finance, hence why we have three members of finance here today, but I would defer to the finance chair as to any reason why it's not a joint meeting tonight as opposed to a meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, I'm going to respond to the question and the point, but I want to be careful that we're not in session officially. We don't have a quorum, we didn't post the meeting, so I think we're free to speak individually because we don't have a quorum, but I don't want any comments this evening to get ahead of what our meeting is tomorrow. The reason that we opted to accept your invitation and attend but not formally have a joint meeting is frankly, the finance committee would like to meet on the occasion of the results of the override for us to discuss what we think the next steps might be. And while this invitation was extended to us this evening, our response is, why don't we wait until the override results are in? Because if it was an override that passed, then there would be no reason for us to meet. It's always nice to meet, but there wouldn't be any reason. So as chair, I made an executive decision that we'd like to have our own discussion, which the select board is invited to attend, for us to map out a number of things that we like to do to respond to the budgets, the cuts that are going to be needed and the like, and we'd like to do it as a committee, because I would remind you, the budget is the responsibility of the finance committee. I think we need to work together, but the responsibility of it is the finance committee. Plus, we had already had in motion the scheduling of a meeting on Wednesday, which includes a number of other things that are not board-related, in which case we would not want to conduct those particular items like review of minutes and reserve fund transfers, year-end transfers, and things of that nature. So while it may not be a decision that everybody agrees to, it's a decision that we made, we're going to meet tomorrow night to address the very issues that you're speaking to this evening, and you're all invited to attend our meeting tomorrow night as well.
So you raise an important point that we should talk about, which is the timeline. So right now, we have town meetings scheduled for June 16th. That requires a seven-day posting for an annual town meeting. In addition, we need some time for the warrants to go out to print, and so we are really looking at a soft date of June 1st to try to have our budget in order. Today is May 13th, and so if you do that math, that's not a lot of time between now and then, which is why we scheduled a select board meeting for the day immediately following the override, so we can start putting into place what needs to happen here. So that's where I was coming from in terms of getting this meeting on the books pretty immediately after the override, whether or not it passed. Understanding, too, that we have a 48-hour posting notice period, you know, with a five-person board now, we may need to, if we end up having to have extra meetings at some point in the midst here, which we may very well have to do, we have to ensure that there is an available quorum of the board to do so. And with these kinds of important decisions, I would greatly prefer it if the vast majority of us could attend and participate. So that's where we're at in terms of timeline, super important to understand exactly what kind of a timeline we're on and how tight it is. Luckily, we do have the room that we built as it is, and, you know, June 16th is really late for an annual town meeting. But it does give us the benefit of seeing what happens with the school district so that we can have firm numbers going into the meeting and hopefully avoid what happened last year, which was this continual, you know, cycle of trying to get an override passed and then having a special town meeting. And, you know, we went through that a couple of times. The feedback that I heard, and certainly I felt as well, is that that was incredibly draining over the summer last year. The other thing is, you know, I don't expect, at this point, to quote one of the members of the department head meeting earlier today, doing this over and over again is the definition of insanity. We're not getting a different answer. So certainly, I think we need to address the budget, and I would, I have asked and tasked our department heads to look at their departments and structure them in a way that is going to be, you know, salient going forward for the next several years on the budget we currently have, so that we can start work on building, you know, the space in the levy limit that we so desperately need. Okay. So what I'm hearing for priorities from the board are, we're in agreement with the department heads in terms of how they'd like to proceed with regard to the out-of-guidance forms, taking out the contractual piece, removing the rest of it, and then looking at preserving the single-person departments, and then looking at trying to preserve as much public safety and DPW as we can, adding in the COA to that. I can't tell you how impressed I continually am with our COA director, because, you know, we worked side by side a lot during COVID in terms of providing service to residents, and, you know, if we were to lose our COA, I really think that this would be problematic for our most vulnerable residents here in town. So with that said, those are the priorities I heard. Did I miss anything? So we have three members of finance here. I believe it is the three officers of finance, right? We have the chair, vice chair, and the clerk. So I see Jeff diligently taking notes. So hopefully, this can be relayed back to the finance committee tomorrow.
Yes, nothing bad, thanks.
I don't know how many of us intend to attend. I have not posted a meeting for tomorrow, so there could be two of us in attendance and have dialogue without having any open-meeting law issues. I'd suggest that, you know, everybody can be in attendance if we're intending to just listen. So is there anybody who feels strongly they'd like to attend? Carol is the liaison.
I personally, I'll take a backseat, and I think it should be ultimately the chairman and the vice chair, whether that seems to be at the end. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
I'll still be out of town.
Okay.
Kirk will be out of town? Okay.
What time is the meeting tomorrow?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Okay.
I've already got it on my calendar, and I'll be here either way.
Yep, yep. All right. I intended to be there, so, all right. All right.
And just to make sure that I emphasize the timeline. If I'm hearing you correctly, we have 12 business days to get this done.
Correct. Yes. It is a short period of time, so we don't have a lot of time to worry about, you know, meeting postings and quorums and things like that. So we need to make sure that we're on it, and we're staying on it, and we're getting this done. So... I think that Heather's going to be working over the next couple of days to try and get us the number that we're looking for. And then we, as a board, need to look at when our next meeting is going to be. We'll have the opportunity to attend Finance tomorrow, but perhaps we should talk about that now. Heather, any thoughts on when you'll have that? Will you have it for tomorrow, do you think?
So I guess I just need some clarification. Numbers are abundant here. I have tons of numbers. They can be any numbers you want. But perhaps if the board could just clarify specifically, what numbers are we looking for? Are we looking for what the recommendation is going to be to the board to the FinCom with regard to removing out-of-guidance numbers? Or then, I guess...
Why don't I rattle them off? Here we go. So what I'd be looking for is, and stop me at any point. What I'd be looking for is, what is the number of the out-of-guidance that doesn't include contractual pieces?
That we can eliminate off the top without...
That we can eliminate off the top.
And when you say, just to be clear, not contractual pieces, you mean any non-union numbers that are in there you want to eliminate?
Right.
Okay, so if it's ours to keep someone whole, you want to say, let's wipe that out, even if it's a single department? Because some of those are numbers to keep singles...
So if there's a single department issue in there as well, then we need to pull that out?
There's at least a...
Yeah.
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 Okay.
That way, we have the number that the department heads and I think we feel comfortable pulling off the top and making that recommendation. After that, I would want to know what the total number is for our single-person departments.
What do you mean?
In terms of the budget, what the total of the remaining amount. So let me phrase this in a way that's a little less confusing. So, if we can add up the salaries of the single-person departments...
When you say salaries, is it the things in that department that could go?
I would suggest that there may be. You know, so if a department is a single person plus, you know, supplies and purchase services, then I think that the supplies and purchase services are probably on the table. Yeah. We're looking at preserving the person.
So what number are you looking for? Are you looking for the number for the preservation, or are you looking for the number that could be reduced?
I'm looking for the number that could be... So, I'm trying to bucket this so that we have, we know what the out-of-guidance number is that we can take off the top, and then we know what we need to preserve, right? And add that preservation number for our single-person departments to the uncut numbers, right? Like the debt service and retirement, the things that we can't touch.
We put them back in the budget, and then you know how much you've got.
Yep.
So, go away with the two and a half out of guidance. Put the numbers that need to be in there, in the budget, then work from there.
Right.
Then work from what you need to cut, what's left, what I've got as a deficit after that.
Agreed. Yep.
And then, well, carry on.
Yep, nope. Right there with you, Carol. You're saying exactly what I was intending, so...
Okay, so for the single departments, you're just looking for salary preservation for...
Salary preservation. Yep, yep. And add that back in to the items that we can't cut, like the retirement.
Okay, you want to make it so it's cap. Okay, I know, I think I understand.
Yep. And then we want to know what that remaining figure is.
So the amount that has to be reduced at that point to get us to balance?
Correct.
Okay.
And then we'll have a much better understanding of where we sit.
Just understanding that if I cut purchase services and other supplies and such from single department offices, that you'd have a body, but they may not have any money to do anything, right? Like if they have, you know, assessors is a good example, right? They have specialized software, and they have contracts that they've already...
Well, it's going to be same for a few others, but...
What's that?
It's going to be same for a few others, but I think all we're saying is just, we want to see how much we can get away with before we start looking at anything we can cut. So, we want to know what that number is in that budget itself. And it might be a case having to just go through and knocking off a little bit off the smaller departments, but we need to know how much to direct the bigger, larger departments to cut.
You're going to have a very high number at the end of the day. Even with every penny you cut from the small departments, you're going to be at a high five, high six.
1.1, so we know it's a large number. And then I think we need to look at the revenues again.
Already did. Yep.
And you just went on that. And then with, I think, health insurance needs revisiting. We've had open enrollment.
We're already on it.
Yeah, okay, all right. There may not be room to put any spare in at this time.
No, we're planning to budget almost to the penny, so that will save a little.
I mean, it could cause hardship later on down the road, but...
Oh, it will.
But we haven't got that money now.
Yep.
Anybody else?
No, no, you covered the question I had, because I remember at the information meeting, when someone asked, what happens if it doesn't pass? I think, Heather, you said the first thing you would do is look at revenues.
Yep.
So you've already looked at that.
We have. Larissa and I have spent, our town accountant and we've spent the past couple of weeks looking year-to-date, all the updated numbers, looking, you know, we tend to spend a lot of time at the December date, because that's halfway through the year. So, you know, building permits, that's usually a good indication and so forth. A lot of our numbers aren't any higher than where they should be. If they were at 50%, some even aren't even at 50%. Motor vehicle excise, as of the most highest calculations, including May payments, as of Monday, was approximately 782,000. Last year was an anomaly year, where it jumped over 120 from the year prior, and that was 840. And we only have approximately 70,000 that's currently committed, which you never collect 100%. And you cannot go above 20% higher than the last year's predicted revenue without having further work on Larissa for the tax recap. So theoretically speaking, we're currently at 700 and approximately 763, 568. So, when you add to that, you can go up to approximately 775, which adds about $12,000. So, like, we've already looked at every one of those pieces.
Okay.
We have a correction to do on the debt. When we did the levy, we left out the interest on one of them. So that does give us in the favor of about 80,000. So that's nice. So, by the time we're done, drops us down to about $1,029,000 with those pieces. By the time we add the health insurance, fluctuate, or take another look at the general insurance, because the benefit of waiting so late in the year to do the town meeting is we have actuals. We don't have estimates anymore now. We're at actuals, right? So we have a couple of those calculations that are built in. So we should be able to get the number down to a million or a little bit less before we start on the out-of-guidance piece. And then before, you know, just to present the FinCom tomorrow as a starting point.
Okay, thank you.
Can we also look at central purchasing?
Yes. So I actually, when I did all, when I did my original preliminary, what happens if we cut, I left that in the cutting piece. What ends up happening a good deal of the time with the central purchasing is when you're saying central purchasing, you're essentially saying you're closing Town Hall for more days, right? Because you're cutting electric and water, and those are the two spots you can cut. You can't really cut the diesel, you know, you can't cut the things that require the vehicles to move forward, literally. The gas.
What I was saying is, like you've just mentioned, when you did the budget for that, we're talking about several months ago. What are the numbers now? That's all.
Oh, we can look at what the rates are currently and what we think will be contracted. But the problem with that stuff is that's estimates, but we can do our best.
You sure you can? Thank you, Donna.
All right. So, when do we think we're going to have that information by?
I will do my best to have it at least available to everyone before FinCom tomorrow night, but I make no promises that I can get all these numbers. Depends on how many pieces I have to chase down.
Okay.
So we do have, you know, Donna already did a lot of work on the health insurance update, so we can get that updated tonight, today, or tomorrow, rather. General insurance is pretty quick. I think some of these pieces can be relatively quick. The problem is just trying to find a way to communicate the information on a sheet of paper so it's easy to understand and follow. And then check in with the departments, particularly on the out-of-guidance, to make sure I understand what they have, to make sure that following the guidance of the Select Board doesn't accidentally knock something of theirs out that I don't realize.
Yeah.
So if you've got any revised numbers, like you said, we're looking at central purchasing, look at retirement and so forth, then just change the budget number so that we know, so that you've got your...
So, I think the only problem is that FinCom's probably going to want to know where they left off. Like, they're going to want to know, what number did we approve? And then they're going to want to see the pieces from there. So, I would speculate. I mean, Mark can tell me if you guys would be looking for, giving me a... If you'd be looking for something else. I just want to make sure that the information is easy for anyone to look at and follow and see the different pieces of the pie.
Yeah.
So it's a revised budget after...
Yeah, I agree with Carol. You just put in a new column and approach that with a new column. That way, the history isn't lost. We certainly want to maintain that.
Yeah, we don't want to lose any history.
Yep. Okay. So we have some thoughts on the budget that are out there now. The next thing we need to think about is the town meeting articles. Heather, can you put the warrant up on the screen?
Should we continue with, your next item was...
Your insurance first?
No. Do you want to discuss any, just refer it back to Finance, the budget now, are we on the budget? Or do you think...
Yeah. I'm fine with that. Yeah, they're meeting tomorrow, so, yep. So is there a motion to refer it back to Finance with the priorities that the Select Board has put in place?
Yes, so move.
I think we've got to move in a second.
You have a motion and a second? Who's the second?
Peter.
Oh, Peter seconded. You moved.
No, Kirk.
Kirk moved. Kirk moved, Peter seconded.
That's fine.
There you go, Donna, okay? All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, we have to do a roll call because Kirk is on Zoom. So all in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chris? Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. All right. Next item we need to look at is town meeting articles. So can we put the draft warrant up on the screen?
So is it town meeting articles, your insurance transfers, I thought was next, but that's okay.
I believe that part B of our budget discussion is to discuss any necessary judgment adjustments to town meeting articles.
Okay. It's back the other way. Hold on. All right. So I just have an outline. I don't have the, I have the warrant articles written, but I thought for tonight's... Oh, that's the wrong. Hold on. All right, hang on. That's part of the minutes. That's going to confuse people. Let's see, update. I'm just scrolling on my computer, trying not to make anyone dizzy.
Okay.
Okay, here we go.
Heather, have there been any changes to this since the last time we looked at it?
Uh, yes. I sent this out on, I think we sent it out Thursday. So, since Thursday, no. Since the last meeting, yes.
Okay.
So, what we did this year is we just tried to provide an outline of the different articles here. We have the specific language that I'm still working on. And after tonight, depending on the direction the Select Board wants to go, we will get the draft warrant language over to Brian Polk so he can start taking a look at it, make sure the article language itself looks good. So, a couple of the changes since the meeting in April, there's about four, give or take, or four comments here. The first is bylaw revision. So at the April 28th meeting, I believe, the Select Board discussed removing the Library and Capital Improvement Planning Committee bylaws, both, from the warrant at this time, to be looked at at a later date. The second, is that correct, everyone's recollection?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
The second piece was stormwater general bylaw replacement. So, in talking with the DPW Director, we did add here the article to replace the town's existing stormwater bylaw. So apparently, we had this bylaw accepted back in around 2019. And according to, I believe, DEP, they said that we were supposed to update it. We did not do the update. We're actually going to get a notice of non-compliance that we have to meet. I do not have that yet. Once I get that, I will circulate that back out to the board. But one of the requirements is mostly just to update the MS4 stormwater. I think their concern is more so, once things are in place, they need to make sure that they are continually updated and monitored. And I do not have the draft of that language. So far, the only correspondence I have from them is back and forth with some other communities and their sample language. When I spoke to Travis, the DPW Director, he said that previously, he believes Fussin' O'Neill, who we had hired to assist us with the MS4 regulations and compliance using ARPA funds, they had originally submitted some suggestions and revisions. So he's going to reach back out to them and see what we have. Hopefully, we'll have language in time to be able to put it forward. So, the reason I'm pushing a little bit to have this done at annual town meeting as opposed to waiting to a fall special town meeting is it appears that the DEP was not a fan of the idea of waiting another year to see this come along and be updated. They wanted it updated sooner, and they wanted an estimated timeline of when we would have it updated. Those who've been following along with our general bylaws or even zoning bylaws over the past two years, when you submit to the AG's office, they have 90 days. They now take 90 days. They don't take 89. They don't take 70. They take 90. We do not get it a single day sooner than their 90-day, and if we're really excited, really lucky, they ask for an extension. So, we just want to make sure that we have enough time to get this into compliance. Plus, there's also always the possibility that just because you've put something before town meeting does not mean it's going to pass the first time, which means that we would need a further timeline to be able to get it into compliance. So this is simply on here as a placeholder, with a strong recommendation to put it forward, and fingers crossed that we have language in time to be able to do so. The third change here is allocation of previously appropriated funds. So when the Select Board discusses in April, we looked at a couple of different things. There were two articles to repurpose. One had to do with a larger fund of around $30,000 for DPW purposes for the building instead of just the original, I believe it was the feasibility study and design. And then the second was about $15,000. So we've repurposed this money a couple of times. Last time, we repurposed the $15,000. We put it aside to be able to update our networking equipment for our IT infrastructure. We were able to get a earmark this year that actually covers all of those upgrades, so we didn't need the $15,000. When we were at the last meeting, we discussed a couple of different ideas. One was looking at pursuing the MAP program that's come up in conversations relative to the assessor's office. This program, and I always forget the name of it, NearMAP, along with a software called Pushpin, kind of goes hand in hand. And what it is, is that it allows the town employees, and any town employee that we want, to have access to the software. It's browser-based, and they're able to go on, they're able to look at properties. And a lot of the assessor's offices are reporting that they're able to utilize it as an assistance for a tool if they can't get on a property, or if they're curious what's happened in the past on the property, and allows us to capture new growth. As we've discussed a number of times, you know, our new growth numbers are not great. They've been trending down more so than trending up. A couple of years ago, 80,000 was an okay number. Now we're looking at a closer estimate to 65,000. As we know, we want to make sure we're capturing everything we possibly can. A lot of communities have reported that this tool has allowed them to essentially double the cost of the tool for them in a very short period of time by utilizing the two pieces combined, NearMAP and Pushpin. Pushpin actually generates a report for anyone who utilizes it of, you know, per street of the changes since the last time that there was a drone that flew over and took pictures. It also allows measurements. It benefits to a lot of the departments. But the reason I put this on here, this was something we discussed at the last Select Board meeting, is the possible use of that $10,000. If you remember, last time, previously, it was for clickers for town meeting that the board wasn't as in support of. So this was the direction they were leaning. the board wasn't as in support of, so this was the direction they were leaning. So that was one piece, the other idea that was thrown out there, uh, was the potential for using some of that funds for hiring a consultant to support the town administrative search process. So, those are the two changes I put here, instead of the 15,000 for the potential purchasing town clickers, I put in 10,000 for the mapping system, and 5,000 for hiring consultants to support the TA search process. And then the last note I have here on the zoning bylaw updates, I, this is just, questions come up a couple times, 'cause the state is really good at pushing the information on floodplains, and they put everyone into a panic attack about floodplains. So the floodplain maps have been updated, bylaw, um, definitions have also been updated, and the state has contacted all the municipalities to tell us that we're required to do those updates. We had originally put in most of the update pieces when we had done the zoning bylaw initial revisions, but because most of the zoning bylaws did not pass in the fall, those are not updated, so this gave us an opportunity to do a little bit more of the updates, and these are incorporated into the broader zoning bylaw update, um, that was before the planning board, and that they are due to make a recommendation on, on, I believe, Monday. So, I did check with Brian, our legal counsel, on this, uh, we do not have to separate out the floodplain zoning bylaw into its own article, we can keep it together. His only concern was making sure that the definitions reference floodplain, they do. Um, all of the definitions for the zoning bylaws have landed into the new section called Section 1 Definitions, and, um, any of them that are specific to floodplain are now referenced in the definition that it pertains only to floodplain, so we're not accidentally doing other things with other parts of the zoning bylaw unintentionally. So, uh, running through just a list here, so these are more grouped by category than order, uh, replace zoning bylaws, this replaces everything, um, including the floodplain piece, and it does exclude the ADUs, 'cause we've already done that update. Everything else is included. Replace stormwater general bylaw in its entirety, that's what we had discussed a few minutes ago, relative to information that should be forthcoming relative to the MS4 and to the DPW. Um, then we have Chapter 90 State Roads or Funds Authorization, this is just a standard, um, compliance article we put on there every year, that the town can accept those funds. And the next two are related, a number of years ago, the town voted to accept a, a road improvement capital stabilization fund, uh, this is funded each year in the tax levy, and each year it increases by two and a half percent. One article says, we're voting to raise and appropriate it, the next article says, let's spend the money, or use the money. Um, so it's a money in, money out, in two articles right next to each other, and this year's amount is 1,248,87, which reflects the two and a half percent increase from FY25. The next three articles are repurposing prior years, and this is what we just talked about a few moments ago, so the first one would be to repurpose 10,000 for the MAP and Pushpin, the second would be 5,000 for the TA consultant for a search, and the last would be repurpose 34,250 for the DPW office building, that's the same as last meeting, no change. Uh, Article 4, or Group 4 here, set revolving fund limits for FY26, this is our standard piece, that we say that the library can expend up to X dollars, recreation can expend up to Y dollars, and the revolving fund and so forth. Uh, there's about six or seven of them now. Enterprise funds, water enterprise operating budget is submitted at 1,511,848, water tank maintenance 21,413, and the new article to be discussed at the next select board meeting is the MS4 enterprise budget, or the stormwater enterprise budget, that was voted, um, into existence at the November 18th, 2024 special town meeting. We now need to set a budget for it, as well as a policy on its operations, which are both slated for the select board's meeting on May 27th, I think is the date. Capital articles, uh, these came from capital improvement committee, and, uh, were modified a little bit by the select board, I believe at the end of the day. Library HVAC, $5,000, Paxton Center School, one boiler, 67,000, police vehicles, two SUVs leased to purchase, first year from capital appreciation, second and third year from the operating budget, 90,000, year one would be 30. A new ambulance, up to 450, the purchase would allow the town to move forward with replacing ambulance one, and the plan would be to start setting aside ambulance receipts annually, hopefully helpful to offset the total cost at the end of the day.
Before we move on?
Yep, sorry.
So this was one thing that was brought up to me today by the police chief in terms of the police vehicles.
Yep.
Um, and so, he commented that in the event that he has to cut bodies from the department, he would rather cut vehicles before he cut bodies, which makes perfect sense, so.
So just keep in mind that the first year we're currently slated out a capital depreciation.
First year, yes, I agree, but going forward after that, it would be coming out of his budget, and so that's where, um, the rubber kinda meets the road on that.
Okay.
School related articles, Bay Path Voke, 652,976, Waukesha Regional School Budget, 8,358,879, and then Waukesha also submitted a article to establish a Waukesha Regional School District Capital Stabilization Fund, so that is something that they would hold, not the town, to be clear. Um, then we have the FY26 towns budget, I did remove the words omnibus, since that was confusing, that amount is no longer correct. And then miscellaneous article, the Waukesha Greenways contributions currently in there at 1 million, or, sorry, try that number again, they love that, $1,100. So, are there any questions on any of those pieces?
Hearing none, no? Kirk, any questions?
Move in.
Okay, does the board want me to look at adding anything, subtracting, subtracting anything, changing anything, or are we good with moving forward with these articles as they are, with the exception of any direction on the police vehicle one?
Right.
Can I ask one question? Uh, we, can you go back up for a sec? And again, this is just a-
What do you want me?
This might be logic related.
How far am I going up to?
Keep going, up to reallocation. So, when you're repurposing prior years' articles?
Mm-hmm.
What can you repurpose?
So, any, any town meeting, so remember, when town meeting articles get voted, right, for, like, let's say we're gonna appropriate 10,000 from free cash, or operating stabilization, whatever, when it's a town meeting article that's specific, it's not part of the rest of the budget, it lives on forever until you close it out. So, you can take that, those funds from, like, the original, we started two years ago with, 22, actually, I think it was, we started with a amount of money for, um, replacing the phone system at Town Hall. We only used a portion of it, and then we ended up having $15,000 left. We took the $15,000 left at the last annual town meeting, or special, I'm not sure which, and we repurposed it for the purposes of the networking equipment.
So in a year like this, when you've got absolutely no money, would you think about repurposing the $80,000 for the Tivnan lights?
So-
That you know is not gonna be useful, or ever give you an ROI.
So the problem with repurposing that, we tried that, tried reaching out to the state a couple of years ago, and we can reach out again, but the argument from them was, it's different because that was voted as a capital exclusion article. So, it wasn't the same thing, like, most of the things we have here on, on town meeting articles, we just go to town meeting, and we say, hey, guys, can we spend $20,000 from free cash for this? Oh, absolutely great, oh, you know what, we spent five, but we wanna use the rest of the 15 there. It's different because you can't just go back to the ballot and be like, let's repurpose it. The state's recommendation in the past couple of years, that if you're not able to use it for that purpose, the 80,000, you should close it out to free cash. Recreation is continuing to try to use the funds, and we just went out to bid again for the Tivnan field lights, the number was still higher than they were comfortable with, so we canceled the bid. I do not know what recreation's plan is at this point, but it's, I don't think that's an article that's as simple as saying, we're just gonna close out the, you know, take the thousand and repurpose it.
And I understand that, can it be?
Yeah, close, let it roll to free cash, and then you could deal with it.
Can you repurpose it for another capital project?
I don't think you can, I think all you can do with it is you can either expend it for the purpose, vote it at the ballot, or you can close it out and it'll roll to free cash.
Thank you. Okay. Any other additions, changes to the warrant, as you see it?
Is everyone okay, is, sorry, Scott, is everyone okay with the, um, the repurpose purposes? Do you, does the board want those? Do you want something else?
Yep.
Do you not want to do any of those, or, you tell me?
I'll entertain any, any discussion on that.
I don't have any problem with the repurposing there, um, the TA consultant will be something new, never done before, but-
Well, really, I think, you know, obviously, this will be a discussion for the board, um, upcoming at some point, but, uh, the thought process, eh, right now, is to hire a search firm, um, and move forward with that, and so, 5,000 is probably low for that.
It is.
But it's a, it's at least a step in the right direction. Um, and then, of course, we're trying to, um, refurb clingly, uh, in order to support DPW offices down there, and so that's where that 34,000 is going.
Okay, so if everyone's good with those items as they are, then what we'll do is we'll put them forward, um, the language is ready to roll, so we'll get it over to Brian Folk to review. And then, once we have, whole, fingers crossed, the language for the MS4, um, we'll be able to get those pieces to the select board for their me, your meeting on the 27th.
Mm-hmm, yep.
For closing, uh, you know, probably reopening, closing of the warrant, just to cover our basis, and then, um, review of the articles and select board recommendations.
Yep, um, so, and as far as the cruisers are concerned, I think that that's still up in the air, but, um, something that will need to be discussed, uh, at the next time we take a look at this.
So you want me to leave it on there for this?
I would leave it on for now.
Always pass over at a town meeting.
We can, it's true, we can always pass over at a town meeting.
Take them action.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Um, so we, we kinda hit two birds, I think, um, looking at the agenda, because the, the warrant was on further, uh, down on the agenda, uh, but it was sort of the appropriate time to address it, where we were talking about the budget, um, especially with the item, uh, with the police cruisers and the repurpose articles, as money's sort of floating around, so that we can make sure that we're dealing with all the budgetary issues at the same time. So, with that, go back to the agenda. All right. Um, so next up, we have our year-end transfers, and then we'll look at our meeting calendar.
Can I just take a minute on this, Julia?
Yeah.
To do some explanation?
Yep, go right ahead, go ahead.
So this is something that confuses a lot of people, and if it's the first time you're looking at it, may not know the difference from one to the next, and it's always worth a refresher, anyway. Um, so we generally move money four different ways outside of town meeting, right? The one we hear about most often during the year is reserve fund transfers. Reserve fund transfers are something that can happen only through the approval of the Finance Committee. Finance Committee meets and they review something, and determine whether or not, um, it meets usually the legal standard through the state, is something on emergency, unanticipated, um, expense that comes up throughout the year. Each year, the reserve fund is funded, um, through the operating budget, the amount may vary depending on what we have, this current year, it was $50,000. So if something came up during the year, and a department had unanticipated expense, um, we've gone to reserve fund a couple times this year, a couple examples, one was, we had a couple long-term employees leave, and they had unused vacation we had to pay out that we didn't have enough to take from the existing line without putting in jeopardy the ability to fill the position. Um, so that came up a couple times, you know, if there's an expense that happens, a couple years ago, um, we transitioned from an animal control officer to a person in town to, uh, regional services that we didn't have set up in the budget line correct, so we used reserve fund. So unanticipated expenses, reserve fund, year-round, FinCom handles. Two years ago, we changed the way we do our budget. We used to vote it at town meeting every single line, so if you have, um, an easy example, the town accountant's line, you have wages, purchase services, supplies, you have three lines, and that's how it was voted. However, a town budget is voted at town meeting, that's how the money has to stay. So if we needed more money in purchase services during that year, for whatever reason, it was an anticipated expense, we couldn't just move money from another line, we had to go to the ten, the Finance Committee, do a reserve fund transfer, if they felt it met the standard, then they did the transfer, and we had the money in that line. A couple of years ago, we switched it to bottom or bottom-line departmental budget. So instead of voting each of those three independent lines, we just voted the bottom line. So if the total of the town accountant's pieces altogether was $1,000, we would just vote $1,000. What that meant is we could move money within those lines, within that budget, at any time. Um, we set up an internal practice where it requires the, you know, the request that the department had, approval of the town administrator and the town accountant, it's recorded, and it's posted on the town accountant's page. We do those, we call them internal transfers, we do them year-round, right? There's no limitations to them, it has to be within a department. So if you have, for instance, town clerk and elections, you can't move money within those departments, 'cause that's not how it's voted, you can move money within town account, town election, or you can move money within town clerk, but not between the two. When you get to May 1st, this is a practice that is throughout the state of Massachusetts, we get into year-end transfer territory. May 1st to July 15th, you can do year-end transfers. Year-end transfers allow you to move money from any department to any other department. So, if there was a, something that came up, unanticipated expense, at the end, you know, the last election, in the elections line, and we needed to cover the cost, we could move money from the town clerk's office down to the election line. The transfers, the year-end transfers, they don't have to be related, you can move it from any line to any other line in the budget, um, which allows us a lot of flexibility. Unlike reserve fund transfers that just require the approval of the Fin, Finance Committee, year-end transfers require the approval of both the select board and the Finance Committee, it's a, it's a double approval piece. Um, we try to do them consolidated in rounds, so we don't have just random things going together, we try to display all the information on the same sheet, so that when it goes to the select board and then the Finance Committee, they have the same round, and then, you know, next week, presuming everyone we meets again, or at least FinCom and then select board a few days later, we would do it again. We try to anticipate these the best we can, we review the expense reports every single week to see what numbers are starting to get really close, um, if we can do internal transfers, we do them, if we're concerned that there's not enough funds to be able to do it, or there's some other reason, we would look for the year-end. Before you have the round one of year-end transfers, and of which there are five, um, they are all proposed to come out of health insurance premiums. The past couple of years, we've had extra money in health insurance premiums for various reasons. Um, this past year, if you remember, we had a lot of changes in staff early on, so people who might have been on the health insurance plan left. And either if we don't fill the position, that saves the health insurance, or, in a lot of cases, and this is something that's newer to municipalities, it's a good problem, is that, um, the way the health insurance system is set up, people can stay on their parents' plans now till age 26. So if you have a, you happen to have a younger employee, they come in, they're under 26, and they don't have their own family, then they're still on their parents' plan, so you're not currently paying health insurance for them. So there's various sets of reasons why this number's higher. Um, this year, going into FY26, we have a very specific spreadsheet, so we know exactly who is potential, that they could hop on the plan at some point in time, we also know who's currently on what plan, what the exact costs are, and to Carol's reference earlier, we're gonna take another look to make sure that instead of having a little bit extra leeway, which we always like, 'cause we get nervous when it's too tight, um, we're gonna try to budget that much more to the penny, which might result in a potential reserve fund transfer later in the fiscal year if something changes. Most of the time, we luck out, and it's a wash, someone comes on, someone goes off. So, um, with that said, for this evening, there are five transfers, they're all below, I can scroll down if there's any questions, but I prefer to stay on the high level if possible. Um, they all are proposed to come from Health Insurance Premium Line, which is 1-9-1-0-5-2-08, uh, that is the shortened abbreviated line. Um, and then the transfers are proposed as following, as follows, uh, to the line 14-21-5-5200, which is DPW Purchase Services. This is for the purchase of the lift, uh, for the amount $12,290, so folks who've been following along online, uh, select board and finance and capital committee meetings have all had various times where they've discussed, uh, the purchase of the lift, at the last joint select board and FinCom meeting sometime, I think, early April, the decision was made, um, with the vote of the select board, that this be pushed, um, the DPW to put in, out of their budget lines, and ultimately, out of a year-end transfer, um, to be able to cover the cost of the lift. So they purchased the lift, this is now to put the money back in their budget, so that they can keep going with their purchases, through purchase services to the end of the fiscal year. Are there any questions on that one? I'll do one at a time.
No.
No questions?
Okay. Okay. The second item here is town accountant purchase services for conference costs of six hundred dollars and nine cents. So this year, the town accountant went and sat for her last exam. She is now certified. In doing so, we really want to make sure she had the ability to study as well as not have to travel or have to not take the exam because there was a snowstorm that came up and she couldn't get there. So we did ask her to stay over at the hotel. We did not have the money in her budget to do that. So this is a reimbursement cost back to her, essentially to make her whole for her six hundred dollars and nine cents that she expended to provide a higher level of service to the town and become certified. Any questions on that?
No.
No.
Okay. Veterans benefits. So this is something we try to budget the best we can at the beginning of the year, but you never know if someone's going to, veterans going to require additional benefits, or more veterans are going to come along. This year, it happens that the veteran that we provide services to had a couple months where the benefits that we covered for him were a little bit higher than they normally were. And as a result, we ended up a little bit out of balance to the tune of a hundred and six dollars and ninety-five cents. Questions?
No.
Okay. Legal. So this one, we originally, we tried to confuse the FinCom. I successfully achieved that mission. We originally sent in a reserve fund a number of weeks ago, and, you know, for whatever reason, everything being as it is, FinCom had not had a meeting. So then we looked at doing things a little bit different. So a little bit of an explanation. So when we look at our legal line, we have two lines in it. We have our regular legal services, and then we have tax title services. We fund tax title services annually, usually between eight and ten thousand dollars a year. That's for the treasurer and town collector to be able to pursue tax title properties, work with legal counsel that's specialized in those pieces, and have any expenses that she may incur out of that line. This year, we haven't had a lot of legal pieces that came out of it. We had originally looked at potentially transferring to be able to cover the March bill that was a little over three thousand dollars out of the tax title line by doing an internal transfer. I was a little nervous about it because we hadn't heard back from the tax title, tax title legal counsel yet as to what costs we had incurred that we still hadn't paid for. So I didn't want to do the transfer and then have a deficit in that line. So I wanted to wait a little bit. We got to May, we found out what the finalized numbers were, so we're a little bit more comfortable with those pieces, and then we had enough to do the internal transfer. So we've covered the March bill, we're all set, we don't need the reserve, that's all good to go. But we still have to deal with the April and May bills, and then eventually the June bill. We did actually just get the April bill today. It was four thousand and some change? Just about four thousand and some change. We expect the following month to be about as high. We've had a lot of unanticipated expenses, particularly related to some legal and insurance matters that were a little bit higher than normal. And then we also just had the normal collective bargaining agreements, memorandum of agreements, work, and so forth. We also have town meeting ahead of us on June sixteenth, which we know we're also going to incur costs. That's usually a pretty high cost, because we also have counsel who comes to us, and we pay for his travel time and onsite. So with that, I was trying to anticipate ahead as to what we may need for the next two months. And I feel like ten thousand puts us pretty close to where we need to be. Hopefully, that will cover almost everything, given the fact that this month was four thousand. We expect next month to be hopefully a little bit less than that, and hopefully June will be a little bit less, so we should be just about where we need to be. And we don't want to have to keep coming back for a year-end transfer, because that requires the boards to meet. Any questions on my very verbose explanation there?
You've reviewed the bills, Julia, I trust, and they're good?
All right, and then the last item here is the library purchase services. So they're running into a little bit of a problem at the library where they have three computers that are several years old, and they no longer support the current Windows. And the Windows is, what's it called, end of life? And as we know, when we have computers that are behind in technology, particularly Windows problems, we start running into cybersecurity issues. So they have had a very tight budget this year as well, and they are asking for the transfer of three thousand two hundred, I'm sorry, three thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. That's not a random number, that's actually a quote, to replace those three computers. Any questions?
And the computers were ten years old?
It's whatever, I don't think I said the number of years. Is it in the documentation, whatever she has?
Yeah, you said three, ten-year-old, well, it says three, ten-year-old staff computers. Seems like very old computers. Just a thought. That's fine.
Okay, so if there's no questions and select board's okay, I would need a motion for approval, and then it would go to finance committee tomorrow for the same.
So these are all coming out of the same line item. We can, I believe, move these all at once if we would like to, or we can move them individually. I will accept a motion.
I make a motion that we approved a lot.
Okay, second motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. All right. Okay, so next item is to discuss our FY twenty-six select board meeting calendar. We've been trying to set our meeting dates in advance to the extent that we can, understanding that sometimes things come up. So we're looking at after July. What are we looking at for our meeting dates? We have, pulling it up now. It should be right there. Okay, good. In the past, we have typically tried to back off a little bit on meetings over the summer. It's probably going to depend somewhat on our budget situation and whether or not we end up having to go to a special. So we're looking at, what I would like to make sure is on the schedule is at least one meeting in July and one meeting in August. And then we may need to look at adding meetings, depending on what our situation is. Then we try to typically meet, we've been saying, I think, what, the second and the fourth Mondays of each month, to try to provide you with the ability to plan for this. We all know our schedules are busy, so being able to anticipate when those meetings will be scheduled is helpful. That said, we will have holidays that we have to work around. So these are the dates that are currently scheduled. We have July fourteenth, August eleventh, et cetera. October fourteenth is that Columbus Day, is that why we have it asterisked?
I think that means it's a Tuesday meeting.
It's a Tuesday meeting, okay, great. And then May twenty-sixth, the same situation around Memorial Day. Are there any dates on here that you know you won't be able to make? You've got a planned vacation, something else coming up?
I didn't bring the dates on my vacation, so I'm going to have to rely on my wife to remind me of that one.
But they could always be changed, close to the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, those dates are outside of my vacation, so.
Yeah, they are for me as well, so.
As far as I know, I'm clear.
Excellent, thank you, Kirk. So for now, we're okay with these dates? And then if something comes up, then we'll deal with it.
Sure.
At the time, okay. So now you have some dates to plan for. All right, I don't believe I have any correspondence. And then we have the town administrators' report.
Do you want to approve those minutes first?
Oh, yes, 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 thank you. So under Old Business, we have the minutes from the regular meeting held on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. I believe it was just Carol and I in attendance, and so I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, I'll in favor Carol.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. Thank you for reminding me about that. Okay, town administrators' report.
So tomorrow, we have a finance committee meeting in this room at seven PM. It should also be on Zoom. Quick shout-out to Sean and Scott for working hard yesterday to figure out our Zoom problem. If you've been watching the past couple of meetings, it's been disastrous. And we realized that something was unplugged. It only took twenty-six minutes or so to figure it out through process of trial and error, but we've now marked it as do not ever unplug. So hopefully, fingers crossed, it doesn't happen again. And if it does, it's the first option, just like when you call the IT help desk, is your computer plugged in? It's the first thing on why this isn't working. Planning board is on Monday night. They should be finishing up with their public hearing and making, they had the public hearing at the last meeting. They just need to make a decision on what their recommendations are for the zoning bylaws. May twenty-second, there's a zoning board of appeals for an actual appeal application. I believe they'll also be holding a meeting prior to that, a few days, in order to be able to do a walkthrough of a property, so that will get posted. May twenty-sixth is Memorial Day. You know what I just realized? I'll come back to that, because I do have a little bit of an update, but I apparently put it on my amended version and not my final version, so I do not have it in front of me. All right. Let me just grab that real quick. Do not want to miss those details and get in trouble. Oh, yes, here we go, okay. Paxton will hold its annual Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony on Monday, May twenty-sixth. The day will begin at eight AM with a community breakfast hosted by the Boy Scouts Pack One-O-Five at the First Congregational Church. At ten AM, the parade will step off from the Public Safety Building and proceed to the Town Common. Ceremony will be held, rain location will be Paxton Center School. Following the ceremony, the Paxton American Legion Post Three-O-Six will conduct gun salutes at three locations. The Old Cemetery behind the Congregational Church, Morland Cemetery at the World War II Memorial, and Worcester County Memorial Park. A luncheon at the Legion Hall will follow, the final salute at Worcester County Memorial Park. Sorry, I had the abbreviation, I had no idea what it was. Let's see, and then the next select board meeting after that that is currently on the schedule is May twenty-seventh. So employment opportunities, we always have a few that seem to be open. Right now, we still have the, I believe there's still a full-time police officer position posted, as well as the recreational opportunities for their summer program. Volunteer opportunities are still out there. Charter Review Committee, Open Space Recreation Planning Committee has a seat, and there's a few CONCOM positions as well. Shout-outs, so I did mention this earlier. We are very proud of Larissa. Larissa Kendy has been with the town for a number of years as the town's accountant. She just passed her very last exam to get her certification as a Massachusetts municipal accountant. So what I've heard from talking to accountants over the years is that exam stinks. There's several pieces to it that they have to do, essentially rewriting the entire journal and code and accounts, and it's a bunch of a nightmare. And she worked very hard at this, and she passed it. We are very proud of her and very excited for the town to now have a certified accountant again.
Congratulations to Larissa.
Personnel, just some quick updates. John Scott has just joined the team as the DPW foreman. Sherri Conger, her last day of service as the town's assistant, oh, it says assistant accountant here, we don't have such a position. Assistant town clerk is actually, this week, we do thank her for her service to the town the past few months and wish her the best as she moves forward. Contract negotiations for fire and DPW unions are all set. The memorandums of agreement are ninety percent finished. I think there's one person I was just waiting on for a signature that I sent her another reminder on earlier today.
I didn't see that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And then we're good. For the new members, we have been using Adobe PDF for signatures. It's actually worked out fantastic. I can send it to everyone and harass them on a daily basis to remind everyone to sign. It does a digital signature, so it says person's name, date, and time it's signed. It's something even the auditors are very happy with, and the state now accepts as formal signatures. So it generally gets signatures faster after things have been approved through the meeting. Let's see, we also have successfully, I believe, negotiated a three-year contract with our police chief, Mark Savassa. We're just waiting on the finalized document from legal on that. And we did get notice today that one of our DPW members, Andrew McDermott? Yes, gave his notice. Well, I'm just excited I remembered his name. He did provide his two-week notice. So we'll have another, we'll have a vacancy again in the DPW. Other updates, MassDOT, or not MassDOT, try again, Heather, .gov. So we started the transition to go to .gov website, www.paxtonma.gov over the past, I don't know, eight or nine months. We are almost there. We have a final list that we should have by the end of this week of the transition piece. It's more of a pain in the butt for employees, but something that should be okay. It takes a number of months to complete the transition. They'll get a new email address, so they'll start letting people know that they have a new email address and starting to catch some things. But over time, it'll be a transition out of the old email. Anyone who wants to try out the new website should be redirected to our current website. So if you go to www.paxtonma.gov, you'll go there. We're running into more and more issues. I ran into one again this week where I sent someone an email and they flagged me as spam because I'm a .net. And .net is now considered not safe and secure as .gov. So that transition is in the works and hopefully wrapping up soon. The IT networking equipment that we mentioned earlier for the fifty thousand dollars from the state earmark, we have about half of the equipment. We're still waiting about the other half. I believe their current estimation on getting it in is early June. So as soon as we get that, we'll get the update back out to the departments to try to get everything installed. When they go to install it, people will be down for at least a day or so while they do the cutover. But that will increase our network security. It will also make it so that our network is hopefully a lot more reliable, unified. People won't drop as much and better throughout all of the buildings. IT tablets, we ran into a slight hiccup on the hotspot piece. I think we're working through that, and we should be all set with that piece of the earmark. Procurement, library trustees met earlier. I was at their meeting. They reviewed the bids they received for the HVAC controls. This is a project that they had started looking at a couple of years ago. Right now, it's on our award for a transfer of five thousand dollars from capital depreciation fund to help support the project. We received two quotes, one was eighteen thousand, one was around seventy thousand. So we just have a couple of follow-up questions on the eighteen thousand, and I expect the trustees to meet again next week, and hopefully, things will pan out, we'll be able to award that contract. The clingly building renovation, I think I call this take three. This is now the third time we've gone out to bid for this. When out the first time, the numbers were very high. We ended up canceling it. We tried a second time with specific drawings, but we did it piecemeal and ended up canceling because we couldn't get enough quotes back. So we've gone out to bid for the invitation for bids for the third time. Bids are, packages are available tomorrow for pickup, starting in the morning. Bids are due in two weeks. We have an optional walkthrough, I think, next to, next, I don't know, someday, next Monday, next Wednesday, the twenty-first, at ten AM, for anyone who wants to. I'm trying to work with Travis. We're going to try to do a little bit of a video and some pictures of the building to try to help answer questions and hopefully get it out there again. And fingers crossed that we can get things in for the scope we have. When we originally did this, we actually had a local contractor kind of give us a scope, so it's not like we started with a number that we thought was insane one way or the other. It just, you know, when you add additional costs, the general contractors, they add in on-top number. Came out a lot higher than we were hoping, so we had to remove some things and modify the scope. So we'll see how that goes. Again, that's funded through the state earmark. We got a couple of years ago, the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for the DPW. We're funding this piece as well as the install, the design and specifications and installation of the septic system at the DPW. So it's got two facets to that project. And then hopefully, if we do go over, anything we do go over, we'll have the funding in that approximately thirty thousand dollars that we repurposed if we need it. DPW septic, I just covered that. We are required to do another DCR advisory opinion. We had to do one a couple of years ago when we originally booked out the project again and got estimates. But in order to even do the septic, we were required to get an advisory opinion from them before we can move forward. So we are waiting on that. So we are waiting on that. And that's the last piece I have on my report. My only other question for the Select Board, we do have a need to have an executive session, probably on Zoom, that includes our legal counsel within the next, I would say, between this week and early next week on a legal matter that I'm happy to bring the two new members up to speed on. But in the meantime, is there any availability of the board that we could get something on the books? I talked to Brian. He's not available into the evenings. He'd have to do late afternoon or during the day because it's town meeting season, and that man's booked.
Tomorrow and Wednesday, I mean, tomorrow and Thursday until probably four o'clock, I'm booked. Anytime after that, I'm available.
Well, I think the earliest we'd be able to do, Kirk, considering tonight is Tuesday, unless we were meeting really late, would probably be Friday, Monday, or Tuesday. What's your availability?
Friday, Friday will work. Monday and Tuesday, I can make work.
Okay.
But I will have to Zoom in.
Okay. But we would do it on Zoom, I think, anyway, so that Brian can easily participate.
And what was the timing we were trying to?
Evening, so.
Evening.
Early, I'd say late afternoon.
Late afternoon.
We can't go into the evening because he's, he's got town meetings, so the latest he could do, I think, would be like five.
Five. And, okay. So can we do Monday at five?
Monday is the better day for me.
Yeah, Monday's better day for me.
Yeah, Monday works.
Chris?
I can do Monday.
Okay. So I will reach out to...
So we do an alternative time and date in case that's not good for him?
How about if I need an alternative time, I'll have Donna reach out, and we can schedule that way.
Okay.
But just so the public also knows that we're looking to schedule an executive session, they'll see the posting come so they know. Usually what we always do is we open the meeting, we usually have one or two people from the public. We vote to go into executive session, and then everyone from the public hops off the call, and we lock the meeting. So, all right, so I will get that going. Thank you.
If we're gonna be meeting an executive on that one issue, let's address all of our exec issues while we're there?
Okay. I'll touch base.
Moving on, citizens speak, public comment. Do we have anybody? We only have one person here.
Julia, don't they lead a meeting on Monday, or other than that?
It's hard to say at this point. I think it's gonna depend on how things go tomorrow.
Okay.
So, you know, depending on how things go tomorrow, then we may need to post.
Okay.
And if we do that, then perhaps we, if we're all available, then perhaps we...
We pick Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. All right. I have no citizen speak, and we have no executive session scheduled for tonight, and so barring anything further, I will accept a motion.
Reorganize.
Oh, oh, thank you. That's important. I knew, felt like I was missing something. Okay, so we need to reorganize, so we need to vote a chair, a vice chair, and a clerk, and then I need to sign a special form for Lori following the election. I'd make a suggestion that I've been chair for three years, and I think that most people would like to see that rotate a little more frequently, myself included. So with that, are there any motions?
I'd make, I'd make a motion to, for Carol to become chair.
No, thank you.
Carol is declining your motion.
I'll make a motion for Peter to be chair.
So we have a, we have one motion that was declined by the nominee.
Thank you, Kirk.
Which, which may not, may or may not be proper meeting etiquette, but I'll take it. And then we have a new motion on the table now to make Peter chair, which I would second. Is there any further discussion?
Hearing none. All in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Can I make a motion for vice chair?
You may.
I'll make a motion for Julia for vice chair.
There's been a motion made for me for vice chair.
I'll second.
I'll second.
There's a number of seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Kirk?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Can I make a motion for clerk? Kirk.
There's a motion on the table for clerk to be Kirk. Kirk to be clerk.
Kirk to be clerk.
Say that fast.
So, okay, Kirk.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Kirk is happy to be clerk. There's a motion.
Kirk to clerk.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Kirk?
Um, aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye. So we now have our officers going forward.
Julia, thank you for all the years being the chair when nobody else really wanted it. Even if they offered it and wanted it, they didn't want it because you know how much work you put in. You really have. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
You've been a good leader. I know Peter.
Great job.
I am happy to pass the torch.
I know you are.
But Peter, please, by all means, feel free to lean on me. I'm sure there will be questions going forward about what's happened in the last three years since you were gone. I'm happy to fill you in, and I'm happy to support you in any way that I can.
I appreciate that, and I'm aware.
The nice thing about, you know, a five-person board is there's more hands to do work, so.
And we've served together for quite a few years, so we work well together.
We do. Yeah. So I'm, just in closing, I'm really excited about the board that we have. We have a ton of work to do, but I can be honest with you...
This may be, this may be the year of the most work that I think a board's had to do in a long time.
Yeah, I agree. So, you know, we've got a lot, a lot to do, so feel free to get your hands dirty, dig in.
Yes.
And, and we're off and running, but I'm so, I mean, I know there's a lot of work. I know it's a difficult time, but I'm so pleased that we have the board that we do. I really think that we're gonna have a lot of cooperative and collaborative effort here, and I'm excited to see us move forward with what I think is going to end up being a new Paxton going forward, so.
Can I make a suggestion or a recommendation?
Mm-hmm.
Donna, could you send the entire board, the, the new boards, all of our information, our email addresses, phone numbers, et cetera, and so forth, so we have at least a master list of this Select Board, since this is the first meeting?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. So now that we've handled that, I will accept a motion to adjourn my last meeting as chair for the current period of time.
So move.
Excellent. Seconds.
I'll second.
All in favor, Kirk? Well, you can take your pick of the seconds, Donna.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote aye.
Thank you, Julia, really thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, Julia.
Appreciate it.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, Kirk.
We are, we stand adjourned. Kirk, we're good.
When did we adjourn?